Is it? Looks good. Okay.
Six o'clock, we'll call our meeting to order. The first thing we have tonight is a public hearing to discuss the 2023, 2024 district calendar start date. And it looks like we have proposed Wednesday, August 23rd, 2023 to start. That's in line with the state law that we can't start before the 23rd. So I think the last few years we've started on the 23rd. So any public have any comments on that start date? We will, we have that on the agenda later for us to approve. So we just have a public hearing to talk about it right now. So it doesn't look like we have any comments from the public on it. So I will take a motion to adjourn the public hearing. We have a motion, do we have a second? Home favorite, I. Close same sign. Public hearings adjourned. We'll now move into our regular board meeting. I'll call that to order. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? A motion, do we have a second? Home favorite, I. Close same sign. Agenda approved. Move into our consent items. Board members have any questions or comments on any of those?
Would it be as early as it is this month? We were a little bit. Light on the bills. He'll be happy next month probably. I did want to say to you, a couple of things while we're here is that you now have your monthly expenditures report back. I still may tweak that just a little bit more. I just need to keep looking at the lineup and budget, but it's pretty close. And also, we haven't had our 2021 audit finalized yet. Because the auditors have had, the one auditor who has to sign off on it, has had some health issues and was in the hospital and then for a long time, and then came back to work, but only part-time. So it is like statewide, they do a lot of schools and it's, we're way behind. So we haven't even begun 21, 22's audit yet. And it's usually, the field work is usually done by now and we haven't even begun it. So I just want to give you a heads up if you hear other schools talking about it and that.
Is the same team that does all the schools in Iowa or is it sectioned off by?
Pretty much the same team. And they're not very big. And they were trying to hire some additional CPAs while she was in the hospital and all that. And they couldn't find any, I know, because I just kept seeing the emails coming out asking for, you know, anybody who knew of anything. I did see that they've moved offices. And so that might be a good sign. Because their office before was really cramped. And so, you know, maybe they've hired some additional and, but I'm just, I'm just really surprised that we haven't even started our 22, 23 field work yet. So.
Board have any questions or comments on any of the bills? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent items? We have a motion, do we have a second? A motion of second, all in favor, I. Close same sign. Consent items are approved as presented. Doesn't look like we have any correspondence this evening. So our next item after that's public forum. Since you signed in first, you want to go, you'd send an email out to us too, right? With some information?
Yes, I know it appeared I was bragging about the last school I've been teaching, but I really do have a point that fits with Iowa education with that. The first two items I included, one came in the day after I sent out last month's email for the board meeting. So I wanted to be sure and include that. I teach now, the last school it remains, is University of Maryland. Now that was started in connection with military 1947. It's expanded, it's public now, so anybody can join it. It's just one of the schools that the military has certain conditions that you have to follow. And one of the things they came up with in 2015 was that we had to meet international standards. So all of the degree programs began reorganizing themselves, setting up the higher standards for international level and all of the concepts that that meant. So they worked their way down through everything, coordinating them among the different grade levels and everything. And then last fall, they started a particular teacher training program, which was the last thing I mentioned in the email, because I wanted to show you that it is similar to some of what you're trying to do now with Baxter and a few other schools, not the entire state of Iowa here. But what I showed you, the first two items in the email was that we want some awards honorable mentions for the quality of the high standards and the content for the curriculum and everything. And we are working on the training now. It started last November. I waited until after the holidays to sign up and I'm just now taking it. They assigned me last week as a start date for my two weeks as my fall class was ending. So it was Friday before I could get to it. But what we are doing in this is something similar to what little I can get out of the link that Dr. Clapper sent me and I requested to kind of take a look at what you guys are doing with your teachers. And that is working very hard to make better connections with students to better understand the context of their situations in order to improve the support systems that are available for them. So more of them are successful. And that, those are the things that we're working on now. And each of us as instructors are at different points in our own development. Because they've had a lot of weekly conversations. But remember, we have instructors not only all over this country, but all around the world, teaching for the University of Maryland. And we're not always available just from the time zone. And sometimes you teach in a class if you have an in-person class. So this has been very interesting to bring it together. But I also wanted to show you, it's somewhat backwards from what Iowa is doing. Because we haven't, the state is failing to get the standards up to the national level. And that means that the state assessments and the state curriculum are not up to the national standards, which somewhat limits your ability in the progress assessment of the students as you are attempting to learn how to provide improved support systems for them. And I realize you do have factions within the education sector here. I'm just going to give you one example here quickly. When Todd Martin was still here, the month before his last month, we had a meeting, the AEA was there, there were some others in the meeting. And Todd is one of those, because he made it very clear as he was screaming at me at the meeting, that if any student who could not learn by memorization in elementary was damaged goods, a direct quote from him, it was not going to learn anything at any higher levels. And I know you do have factions, he wasn't just on his own, you've got others out there that still believe this. The interesting thing is, on the Iowa Department of Education website is a link directly to the National Department of Education that shows that that approach is a violation of the civil rights of students. If you hadn't, if you didn't leave the following month, you would, I guarantee you'd have had a lawsuit by ACLU because it's a violation of student rights to have that thought. So my hope is, given what you are doing here to develop support systems for students, to look at them differently, to find, take into account the various aspects of what is going on in their lives and to provide additional support as is possible to help them get through. That this also indicates as you network that additional ones are doing that, which reduces the size of that faction. And that as you need it, even do on the board, yes, I know you've got your November meeting coming up here. If it's possible to have more conversations, to start talking about the fact raising Iowa standards, improving the curriculum accordingly, and thus the state assessments, it would be a big help to you. You wouldn't have to just go by the national assessments, it's the way your students do take you. In other words, you would have more tools available for you. So I'm just asking you once again, if you can expand your conversations a little bit to help. Since you're coming at this backwards from the way we just went about it, but that was the point of my email. That you aren't alone out here, there are a whole lot of others. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Kristin?
First thing I want to say thank you, Lori. He has been a board member who's followed up. He initiated emails after our August meeting and has continued to try to address questions that I raised with this board 14 months ago. 14 months to get answers about curriculum and instruction that's being taught in this school is unacceptable. I understand we all have busy lives and some of us have other jobs to do. But 14 months, when the primary focus of this school and this board should be the education of our children and making sure that we're aligned to the standards and ideals of this community and country are important and should be given the utmost attention to make sure that the questions that have been asked and the requests for information, both formally and informally, have been followed up to parents and community members. And I truly do thank you, Lori, because you stepped up to the plate. You answered my emails. You sincerely ask questions to try to gain clarity, to make sure you understand the information that's lacking. I would expect that across the years. And I just think it's unfortunate that 14 months ago, this wasn't handled the way it should have been handled. Because situations would be much different.
She will move into our business items. Rob, do you want to go first with principal reports?
Sure. So I don't forget, I'm just noting notes that I needed to get approval for Ms. Appia Bremel, three cheerleaders qualified for the cheer honor squad. I'm going to talk about another honor, a second other cheer. Kelly Cross, Reagan Russell, Morgan Radcliffe made the cheer honor squad. And they go to Cedar Falls, they dance up at the state semifinal finals, they spend the night. So I think we need approval. Is that right, Julie?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. We have a motion to approve the overnight stay of the three cheerleaders for cheer honor squad. We have a motion, do we have a second? Home favorite, I. Close same sign. Overnight stays approved.
Quick, we just, Cassie just told me, walking out to practice tonight, that Morgan Ratliff, I may have this tone wrong, I'll get it to Julie, the all-state cheer squad, which is different than the honor squad. She told me only 33 girls across the entire state make the squad. They will dance at the state tournament basketball. And Morgan Ratliff made that, tried out this weekend and found out just today, won 33 across the state. So comparable, that would be like a lead all-state or first-team all-state. So we definitely want to recognize Morgan. Next week's our parent-teacher conferences Tuesday, Thursday. We're going to do, it's been a while since COVID, we'd love to get back and a lot of feedback from our staff. They like that we're going to do ours in the lunchroom, open, no set appointments. Come in and see the teachers as they have time. Going to pass out our, the ISAS results from last spring and hard copy. I know some parents got them and have a login, but we're going to get them their hard copy. And that will also let us track how many parents we see for parent-teacher conferences. I want to talk about a little bit of, it kind of hit with words, what Sue was talking about in our at-risk plans, looking at each individual student. So every Wednesday, one, I meet with Dennis, our new at-risk coordinator, Scott Pierce, success coordinator Scott Pierce, and Travis. We look and look at our plans with students that have been identified in high-need areas. This may come from staff, there's a Google form, they fill out, parent contacted, here's the tier-one interventions I've done. And we take it over from there. He's done a great job meeting with kids, schedules, at-risk study halls, working with individual teachers on what really needs to get accomplished. It's in its infancy stages, we've never had that before, but it's, I can already just feel that that's been a really good thing. Getting to know these students, as Sue said, I mean, everybody comes at things in a different. I just sent an email just soon as I walked in, before I came down, something about a student that is massively, people need to know and probably why this student's not being successful. So everybody has a different story, but that's been really nice that we meet weekly and we have plans in place, tier-two, tier-three intervention, success interventions for these students. In case you're hearing out there, new staff has been great. Our hope is that we retain everybody and for a long time. The one position that we want is our book acquisition. So we know that was either a semester or a year. So I've already had two informal meetings with people interested in our position. My hope is somewhere around November-ish to late November, sit down, make sure Bill's going to finish the year. And then we try to hire somebody. I found out, I was there, had, I don't know exactly, for six or seven student teachers and six, five of the six or six of the seven have already taken jobs for 23, 24. So they are student teaching and already took a job before they started student teaching. So I wanted to get on top of that. I've met with a couple of people already for, probably for the fall of 23. But just so you maybe hear that and know that we're talking to people, see it out there. We're going to move on and hopefully we get somebody hired for sure before Christmas for that position. It's pretty competitive, it's a tough fill. Wanted to mention, we've hired seniors in the past to use as parents. And that is really crucial for us right now. High-need situation has came in, you may or may not have heard about it. It's really taxed our sped department and our parent department in an already pretty depleted situation, trying to meet kids' needs. So it's been really nice, we've been able to hire, right now, three different seniors that give up their opens. We pay them, we've hired them, they go through the whole check. And then instead of having that period off, they clock in, clock out for 41 minutes, working with our sped teacher with individual student. And I just, again, tonight, heard that we may need another one or two of those. So, but that's been a really good connection, whether that person's looking at education or not. I mean, hands-on, we've got kids going to work on farms, school-to-work situations that are in their careers. It's worked well, it's a win-win on both sides. So thanks to everybody who's had a hand in allowing us to hire seniors to work with our high-need students. Wanted to mention into the, into the fall sports, feels like it's been a long season, has been a long season. But we had a lot of success, our volleyball team played in the gold bracket in the conference tournaments. That means they were in the top half of the conference, battled hard, cross-country, has had some individual success. I'll probably report on that next month because they're running in their districts Thursday. I think we have a definite shot for one and maybe two students to be able to run it state. And our football team qualified for state this year, as I was just saying to Debbie, a little bit of a tough loss a couple of weeks ago that put us in a tough situation now for playoffs. But you got to play everybody eventually, so we're going to go play the state reigning state champs on Friday over in camp. But hats off to our kids, they usually don't talk a lot of football during this report of it, just to recognize that team and their accomplishments. I think they're pretty important and the HASS has been great Friday. We're going to do a pretty big pep rally, hopefully recognizing cross-country kids who made state. Our football team, the cheer, the band will play elementary K-12. So those are always great to get everybody in the gym, just take some pics and have some fun at the end of the day. So we'll do that Friday. Last thing I have, I want to pass these around, they're double half, so it's one, two. You should see on the top of these, they look just the same, one says Baxter, one says program. So he's taken one of each. Just wanted to briefly, as I was looking at programming and small schools and the struggles that we have, our CT programs are really, really important. And one of our, one of the biggest things we do in CT is use this career academy. And I know we talked about the career academy, I went over and had a meeting down there, they had, they're trying to open up some new programs. Thought it was really interesting to look at the numbers and how well we use the career academy. So as you take a peek, and there may be enough for two more as well. But if you look at, the sheets are program, Kristy, sorry, program and Baxter, same, what we're looking at is the exact same data. One is for all of Jasper County is on the program all schools. So we're all looking at the same thing. You'll see 2021, 21, 22, 22, 23 with each of the programs that are offered over at Jasper County. So if you follow along, in 2021, Jasper County had 165 students take advantage of that program, then 169, which is up to 205. In a nutshell, Baxter, we went from 14 to 19, up to 27 kids. That's predominantly, for us, it is all juniors and seniors. Thirty-some percent of our student body goes to Newton to look at, look into a program, a career program. And if you look at what our percentage of Jasper County is compared to, I mean, Newton, it's a little bit even PCM and Linville Sully and Colfax Bingo, our percentage of kids that attend there is really high. And I bring this to your attention, one, because it's a great thing for our school. It allows, it's a way when we, we just had a perspective, a family come in today and be able to say, yeah, here's everything we take. But we also teach auto collision, baking, building trades, business administration. Those are things that we teach because we have an agreement with DMAC. And they earn college credit, local credit, and could possibly earn a certification or starting towards a certification while they're still a junior, senior in high school. A lot of the bigger districts have some of this in play, we do not. So as I talk to principals around the state, it is so nice that this, I know a little bit of the problem is kids driving back and forth. But when it's 13 miles or 12 miles over there on this side, it, I mean, there are some people that are going 40 and 50 minutes that live on the outskirts to get to their community college to do some of this. So I just thought it was great data, I was over there for a meeting last week, looking at programming, looking at numbers and how things may change next year. And Terry Norton has done a fantastic job as the coordinator, he's retiring this year. So they'll be looking at a new coordinator, but the programs are so solid and in place. But I thought, Travis and I looked and sat down after this, I mean, that 27 number is really great. That means we have a lot of kids and it's tough because we don't have a ton of elective options. Especially if a kid comes in and says, hey, you know, I'm not really a Volkswagen and art person. Well, then you're really squeezed into our business classes. And that's all, you know, when you get to that junior, senior year, you have, you know, you've used a lot of those elective classes. So this is just a great opportunity. So we approve it every year. I think it's something we need to sell and be aware of. I just thought it was nice, the numbers for you guys to be aware, we talk career academy all this time, all the time, but these are solid data numbers. And they're looking at, always looking at new programming and areas. And right now, I've met with a couple of the instructors over there with building trades instructor and the welding instructor just this year on some of our kids who may not be as successful as we want. They are so easy to work with and saying, hey, here's what we need and here's how I'm going to help them. And I mean, they've been like staff members to me. So that's been a really nice bridge as well. So just thought it was good and open up to questions on career academy, if there are any or anything else that I'm talking about.
Have we ever had any problems with driving back and forth as far as like an accident or anything?
The worst we have is we have a students, they go and then all of a sudden, let's say, lose a license or their ride moves, they were going to go with this person. So we worked pretty hard, we brought kids in that go during that same time, got the parents together saying, hey, maybe help with gas money, some of that. We've never dropped, no one's ever dropped just because of transportation. So, you know, we have kids, so the morning goes from 7:30 to 9:30 or 10:00, or the afternoon goes from like 1:00 to 3:15. We get attendance every day on our kids that don't go, Angie follows up with the parent, I follow up if they've missed so many days. We have some kids not be real successful at times, and it's usually attendance, because they're going to work with these kids as long as they get over there every day. But no, we haven't had any accidents, a couple speeding tickets, talk to them before they go and understand it all. You know, I'm one of, I'm old school, so I'm nervous about all that, but it's the way of the world, kids just go, so.
Are the classes Monday through Friday, or is it like a Monday, Wednesday, Friday?
The career academy is all, except for the teacher program that is more onsite, doing your hours as practicum. And then they go with our, it's either once or twice a week, everything else, Monday to Friday. We get a little bit of a, kids like to use both ends of this. So if we're not in school, guess what happens with our kids? They don't go to DMAC that day, well, I don't have school. Then DMAC is on a break that we're not on, and then they miss DMAC on those. So they play the scheduled game a little bit. But as I also tell them, they're done a week before us at Christmas, they start a week later than us. So there's always a couple of weeks that, you know, but yeah, they, they're, they will take advantage of that a little bit. But yeah, all of them meet every day. And they're, the instructors are great. We try to get our kids that earn activities to take the morning one if they can. But even, I have two football players right now that just are 15 minutes late to practice every day, they finish out there. If it's a game day or something special, they let them help. So they know that they need us and we know we need them, so it's a great part.
Any other questions on that? Thank you, Rob.
Yeah. So Michael mentioned she had to do some thumping today, which I appreciate it because it allowed us to have our PLC consult come in and work with our teams. And it was a great success. Matt Treadway came in and ran the meetings. And so in the morning, we had K through three sit in a room and really talk about what it is to be a collaborative team. They worked through an agenda, they talked about the different steps in the cycle, they're going to be talking through assessments and the plans that they have to really make the best decisions for our kids inside the classroom. So we've noticed over time, we've talked about being PLC and being collaborative teams. And we feel like we're getting stronger and stronger in that. Again, then just taking that next step with these collaborative teams and saying, we need to know exactly what the conversation is every single time that we meet. What are we having a conversation about? So we've really gone to a point where one of our teachers is the lead in writing the agenda for each time that we meet, working through an agenda that is focused and then knowing exactly what should be on the agenda. So today was, was important in the fact that we worked through a model of what it would look like to go through an entire unit of study for either math or reading, depending on what the teacher brought. And just a lot of impact, a lot of eye-opening things for our teachers, but the conversation was so deep. Matt was appreciative of the conversations that they had and felt we came away far stronger today after that. So it was another great, a great day of learning for our teams and obviously built us a little bit stronger too.
So was he here half-day or whole-day?
He was here all day today. So we had to start K through three in the morning and then four and five in the afternoon. So about two and a half hours worth of conversation and learning through that collaborative process. So it was good. Piggyback on Rob too, we started a student success team that is kind of teacher-led at this point. And really just working on a referral process for kids, things that we're seeing, they'll take a look at a tennis data, behavior data, things that can give us information and insight on how we can better serve all of our students. They meet every week after school and they just talk through kids. And we talk about what kinds of interventions we've had in place with kids and what maybe we can do differently going forward with some of them. So it's a good, another conversation, another piece of data that we use to try and make better decisions to help each one of our kids in school. Some celebrations, we, last month, we started our monthly assembly. So really on, working hard to celebrate the success of our kids. We've focused on being respectful, responsible and safe. So we recognize those kids that did that throughout the month. We also talk about the guidance lesson that follows. So if they, if the focus was responsibility and the guidance lesson, then we recognize those kids that showed that throughout the last month. It was awesome, it was truly great experience, the kids were cheering on each other as they got the award and came down. It felt like the price is right at times. It was just a very honest feeling, it was awesome. They were celebrating each other and then had an opportunity to celebrate teachers as well, which we felt was super important. And again, Rob said we'll have that again on Friday, do it again, celebrate more kids and all the things that they're doing, some of the staff as well, and parlay it with a, with a pub assembly. So that was cool. With that, we also started a monthly Facebook page. So we wanted to share our stories, share all the successes that we have and the things that are great in our school. And so we started that and Amanda's running that, she does a great job of it. So I just want to continue to share all the great things that are happening. So that's another piece. So I just wanna continue to share all the great things that are happening. So, uh, that's another piece. One thing too, um, is our big bolt, little bolt program has started again. Um, and again, I just, I sent an email last week to one of a family member, just a kid that came down and, and our kid had a rough start to the day, right? He saw that happening and he walked over and immediately changed that kid's day by just sitting down and having a conversation with him. And working him through and just talking to him. So another piece of thing that we have in place that, um, makes a huge impact. He had probably no idea that that's gonna change the direction of that kid's day, and it did in that moment. So another great program that we have in place that's already had, um, major success in just the first couple of months.
Is that high school, are the big bolts high school?
So, um, yeah, that's awesome. Uh, and the last piece I have is we had our data day just two weeks ago. Um, and really our data is focused on our fast assessments, our statewide screeners. Um, with that came, we had, we were sixty-eight percent proficient or not at benchmark, sorry, in reading. Seventy-eight percent, um, at benchmark in math. Our focus of the conversation wasn't necessarily the numbers there, because our conversation was more on, um, this is a screener. It just kind of gives us an idea where kids are, where we sit as a school. Our focus more should be on what's happening inside the classroom, our classroom assessments. So now that we have the screener that kind of shares out, you know, where kids might be or where they might fall. Um, that's not the end-all-be-all. There's still a lot of things that we're gonna do and put into place to make sure that they're successful. And a lot of that comes from the classroom-wide data. So we kind of transitioned from always focusing just on what that one screener of that fall or winter or spring is. And focusing to on all the assessment data that we take from the classroom and everything else that we have. And making sure that that's what's really driving our decisions. And so, uh, it was really impactful, great conversations again with our teachers and that, in that data team. Um, and just felt different as you walked out, knowing that our focus not necessarily on evaluation of any sort, right? It was more just making great decisions moving forward, uh, to help, to help our kids succeed. So.
Any questions for Zach? Thank you. Okay, our next item is to approve participation in Iowa drug and alcohol testing program. This is a routine item. Testing through I E S B, I think they provide it. We have it for bus drivers, right? We've used this in the past, so we just need to approve it again. So board have any questions on that? Do we have a motion to continue participation in the Iowa drug and alcohol testing program? We have a motion. Do we have a second? And a motion of second, all in favor, I. Post same sign. Motion's approved to continue the participation in Iowa drug and alcohol testing program for the twenty twenty-three calendar year. Okay, our next item is the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four district calendar start date. That's what we had the public hearing about when we opened our session tonight. So is there much to talk about?
Not really. This is really just about the start date. It's not about the calendar and everything. Um, when we start to build the calendar for next year, we're gonna work with the district leadership team. Because we might wanna make some changes based on some of the feedback from the staff. We've been giving, um, the high reliability school surveys. We gave one at the beginning of the year, and then our district-wide P D on Monday was, we all met in here and we talked about the results of the surveys. And, um, how we can use staff feedback. And so, um, one of the things that we want is like using some of that feedback, trying to look at how can we better build our calendar to meet the needs of kids and teachers. And so we thought the district leadership team would be a great place to start with that conversation. Uh, but that will be come to you later. I think it's usually like February, March-ish, when we actually approve the count, like the next year's calendar. But this is just to pick the date to get us, get the ball rolling.
Any discussion on it by board? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the start date for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four year as August twenty-third? We have a motion. Do we have a second? The motion of second, all in favor, I. Post same sign. Motion's approved to approve the start date for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year as August twenty-third of twenty twenty-three. Our next item is our PSYAC committee. Need to approve the membership on that.
Yeah, and I've attached the document that's got the list of names. There's a few that have gone off and a few that have gone on. Um, do we have to read all those or you? Okay, yeah.
I'll, I'll post all of them individually.
Okay, and so actually, Dr. Anderson heads all this up. Uh, so she sent out an email. Earlier this, I think it was Monday, she sent one out inviting these people. So these people are all invited to be on the PSYAC committee. Um, they, some may decline, but these are the ones we've invited. We tried to get a good cross-section of the district and, um, elementary and secondary, a few kids, a few parents, a few community members. Uh, some with kids with special needs, some with kids who are gifted, just a good variety, um, just to try and hear. You know, from all facets of the community.
Those people that, like, confirm they'll be on, they're usually decent attendance.
Yeah, I mean, Kim, you, there's, it's, it's kind of varies. We do it twice a year, I think, typically. And I mean, we had pretty good, but then, you know, when we send it out, there's some that just say, oh, I can't make it that night. And we're trying to do it, um, in November this year. It's in between football and basketball. And like, you know, volleyball's done, cross-country will be done. And so as far as sports seasons, there's potentially football could still be going, but I think it starts at five. So even if those guys still have practice, which would be fabulous, we hope they're practicing for a long time. Um, basketball wouldn't have started yet, so it's kind of that sweet spot right in there between seasons. So hopefully that helps, but we also understand that members of busy time, it's going to be the holidays and people are just busy, dance, just all sorts of stuff. So, um.
It's hard to get kids there too. I remember a couple of years ago, Maya Phelps would regularly come and she just brings a great perspective. But I think it's hard to get kids.
Yeah. And then when they've been at school all day, then they've been at practice all day, or, you know, all evening, and then they have to come back to school and hang out with all of us. So, um, Rob did a, a nice job of choosing some kids that he thought would be. We tried to choose some younger, like some freshmen, sophomore, juniors, so that they can stay on it. So we just have to keep adding freshmen each year.
Do they get like, um, was it the silver cord or whatever? Do they get hours towards that?
Yeah, that's a good idea. We sure could.
We sure can.
I mean, that's a public service.
Yeah. Cause Travis logs all that, doesn't he?
Any other board questions and discussion on the proposed PSYAC committee members for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three year? Do we have a motion to approve those committee members as presented? We have a motion. Do we have a second? A motion of second, all in favor, I. Post same sign. PSYAC committee members are approved as presented. Look like we have any open enrollment activity this evening. Uh, facilities, grounds and transportation. We haven't, by chance, gotten a bid in on tree removal, have we?
No, but we did get a, uh, bill, um, for the, the truck, the pickup truck.
Oh.
Um.
Needed transmission.
Yeah, and then it needed some. Trying to remember, like. Tyrod?
It could be.
Maybe. Is that like the holds on the tires and stuff? So it was shaking a whole bunch. And so they thought that, they, you know, tried to get some quotes on that. And it turned out, I, I just signed the P O T because they said, well, we hate to spend this much money. It's like fifteen or nineteen hundred dollars, but they're like, but we need a truck. This is the truck we use to scoop snow. And like, obviously, we haven't had it yet, but I mean, it's snowing in Michigan right now. So, I mean, any, like, we have to have the truck fixed. So it's still cheaper than buying a, a new trucker. So it's, I think, uh. Yeah, so I think he's, you'd, I'd have to follow up with Pam or Deb on that one. But, um, I just know that just came across my desk, like, I think yesterday. And so that's why it's kind of fresh in my head.
Okay.
And you may wanna get more details on what's actually needs fixed. It's like the thing that makes it shake a little bit. But it sounded legit.
I talked to Bill a couple of weeks ago. I saw him on the athletic, he was in the process of getting some bids on that, so I didn't know.
Yeah, do you guys all know about that? There's some, um, a bunch of the trees are. Oh, did you talk about that last month? Okay, yeah, so Bill's working on getting quotes for that.
How's the floor and everything over in the multipurpose room? Is that?
I haven't heard any complaints, but would they say anything, would they talk to you guys or? So maybe so far so good. Yeah, we'll kind of wait and see. We could replace it if we need to, but if it's working, then let's kind of just wait and see.
My take, I think, was the wrestling program was happy with it. It was other people that might, you know, yeah. Guess we'll kind of wait and see. Okay, we'll move on to our next item, and that is personnel. Looks like we have some coaching contracts to put out. So if you wanna go over those, Michael.
So, um, we've got Josh Russell as our head high school girls track. Um, Cassie Applegate Brummel is gonna be, um, high school basketball cheer. So that'll be exciting. And then, um, Rob has volunteered to take over head middle school boys and girls. Not volunteered, but like, uh, is hired, uh, has the head middle school boys and girls track teacher or coach. And then somehow he has talked Kristin Luther into being the assistant. So it'll be lots of fun, um, Luther bonding time at middle school and track.
This is our empty nest planet. Actually, her ideas. She loves the middle school kids.
She does.
She does.
Is she a runner?
Uh, she was a cross-country runner.
Okay.
She was a state tennis player. So I said, why don't you just start a tennis program? We didn't have anybody. And, uh, what a great way to go out.
Yeah. Well, that'll be fun. So. So I recommend those people.
Okay. Any board discussion on those?
There were no other candidates for junior high track.
Do we have a motion to approve the coaching contracts as presented? Do we have a second? My motion and second, all in favor, I. Post same sign. Motion's approved to, uh, approve those coaching contracts as presented.
Congratulations, Rob. My athlete is very excited.
I remember when you had to take the middle school boys basketball. You said they had a successful season in spite of your coach.
Somebody actually, I said, I've coached track for six years.
So we've got, uh, next item is our twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three district enrollment.
So if you click on the spreadsheet, um, this is just the one that you guys have had for a lot, well, since nineteen eighty-three. Um, and so if you look at that, the very bottom, we're up overall three kids. So we're up two in district. Kids, and then, um, net up five opening enroll from last year. And so, um, our total K twelve kids is, uh, four thirty-two point four. And that's up three from last year. This is kind of confusing. So I spent, I was glad you called and like sent me that message.
I think our certified for.
Yeah.
The number actually should be in red. Three fifty-seven to, or three thirty-seven to three thirty-five.
Yeah, I, I should have put that in red. I can change that.
And then when you run it across it, so three down.
The two on the certified, it's, it's two less than the four.
Plus, and then plus five.
Yeah, that's our net.
So net plus three.
Um, and like we said, we're a little, we're not, you know, not overly concerned, but we've got, uh, forty-two seniors, forty-four juniors. And, um, Mr. House, we have twenty-something kindergartners.
Kind of mid twenties.
And then preschool, I think we have twenty-four or so. So we're just getting, like, graduating out two really big classes for Baxter. And right now, we just have kind of small, two small ones. So, you know, we'll just have to watch that. Because, you know, we all know schools are funded by the number of kids that you have. So that's just something we've gotta watch. Um, and then the other one is just some screenshots from the, the one that says, uh, more details if you're interested. That's just a couple of screenshots from, um, over the years. It's not open for me. I don't know if it's open for you.
I haven't had an hard time doing.
Yeah, my wifi has been off and on like this all day. Um, but when you, if you can get on it, it's just, um, the exact thing from the portal. Like, that's where we go to the Department of Ed and enter the information. And then we get, um, the certified enrollment from there. And so that'll tell you how many, um, you know, how many preschoolers we have and. Is it, is it not, is it, it's, mine's not opening.
I couldn't get it to open at home today either, yeah.
You know, Rob and Zach, have you had any trouble with your Google Drive not opening very well today? Mine like opens just slightly and then it just. I don't know. Yeah, I, I mean, it's mine's currently just spinning. It says loading, but. So anyway, what it's gonna show you is just like our trends over the last couple of years, like just didn't like kind of dig in a little bit more.
Yeah, why is that?
That, okay.
Cause. I thought.
I think the A A one has our preschoolers added in. And I, I'd have to. Cause we could always get on there.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Certified on the A A says three sixty point seven. Three thirty-five.
Certified means in the district?
Kids that live here. I'll do a little investigation on that and we'll get back to you on that.
So I said, so Hartland said what? The total, were they five point five?
Hartland is.
The serve is five point five. That's what certified enrollment has on the D E also.
Certified, three sixty point seven.
Is that what it has?
What did you say? Sorry.
Uh, A A is three sixty point seven for certified.
We have three sixty point seven. That's correct. That's what this, the certified norm is, D E is.
So maybe because they're crowning, if that includes preschoolers, that would be the difference of why we see three thirty-five.
I, I can't get anything to open, so.
Where, I don't know where you got the three thirty-five point three, Michael.
I got it from. I, I can't, oh, it's so frigging open.
I have three thirty-four point three here on that. This is, I'm a D E, it's three thirty-four point three. Yeah, so then this is your minus three. Total, but then we increased on the. And we increased.
Did anything change from the time we initially certified?
It was at six point five, but now it's at five point five.
Cause I took those screenshots. I don't know, last week, so I don't know if something is adjusted on the D E's actual site.
Maybe, I, I mean, I don't know. Actually increased on opening enrollment by nine. Actually, enrollment is at one point five. Actually, enrollment is at one point five.
I can email Kurt Zubra. He's the one who sent this out, and I'll just get some more clarification from him, and then I'll send you guys the email explaining like where these numbers are all coming from.
It's kind of an interesting look at that. A A won the size of different school. I mean, there's there's a handful that are our size and then there's some big schools.
Yeah.
Like her.
And what's the top of that? They're down.
Did they close? They haven't closed, right?
Who's that? Did their case?
Yeah, see.
They did. They combined with somebody.
Carlisle and Carroll. There's no data in there. So they must not.
Yeah. When he pulled them, he must not have their numbers in the seat.
Maybe you're right, because it is what A C G C now they hold rich air.
Oh, yeah. So that could be some.
Yeah.
Their Casey.
Or Guthrie Center.
So there's probably no numbers here for that.
Yeah.
What'd you say about?
Cores in parentheses too, because that means they're down.
Yeah, down thirty.
Like Carlisle and Carol. I mean, those are a big number.
Well, they don't have numbers in here for some reason.
I see.
See, so I mean, here's norms. See what their norms are, and that's about what they're out. It's because. They weren't. Colback's maybe goes down twenty. Comms Max also down.
I think it's a pretty interesting trend to see our certified, which are people living in our district really, to what we serve as our beds. We're always serving more than live here. And if you look at so many of these other districts, they have more that live in their district that they're serving. So that means they're all eating out big time. You start to look at what we serve compared to a couple of other smaller districts around here. We're serving almost a hundred more kids in some of those districts. And I think we've closed the gap too between our what's what's living here. It used to be a lot more of what we served than than the certified, and now we keep closing the gap. We have more and more kids who live in our community or that.
For sure, for sure. We, um, I think it was back when Todd was here that last year, we had that joint city school thing. And we, you know, said, you have to start doing something for resident to start enticing, you know, people to build here again or whatever, because we're losing residents by our open enrollments, and it's so volatile, you know, and so then after that.
Also.
Yeah, yeah. And so then the residents numbers started going up and really have been that steady. Yeah, for the last five years.
Because a lot, like, most of the funding follows the kids, but not all the funding. All the categorical funding does not follow the kids except for teacher leadership grant. So of these hundred and some kids, we love having them, but we're missing out on all the category or mostly all the categorical funding that should go. So those hundred kids, the districts that they live in or that their resident districts get to keep that money, but they don't get to serve those kids. So it's good for them, but.
I also learned at at the conference that I was at last week that open enrollment. So it used to be if you're if you had open enrollment kids in your in their seats on October first, and you could bill for them. If they showed up on October second and you kept them, you just were out money. That's no longer the case. We can now pro read it. So that'll help us. It'll be a little bit of a nightmare figuring out who came when and how many days and all that stuff, you know, but.
Oh, that's good.
But it helps because you're not waiting a year behind now.
Makes sense with the change in open enrollment.
For sure, for sure. Yep.
Because we had a student come into Heidi's student after October first, where we would have just had to serve them in whether we're paying pair or even a full F T E person. If it came to that, where now we we at least can, we know.
We could have been easily thirty thousand in the tank for this year that we wouldn't have gotten funding for.
I'll follow up with Kurt tomorrow and get try and get a better explanation, and then I'll send you guys all an email with that.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions or comments on our district enrollment? Okay, we will move on to our superintendent's report.
Um, not a ton of stuff, but just note that the I S B conference is coming up. So if you're interested, let Julie know, and she'll get you registered.
Where do you have to register us to?
Can you tell me how I can do it now?
Okay.
I'll be on Julie's second. They'll make it.
Okay. Everybody else is in. Rob and Hask, will you guys be at the dinner that night? Or do you want to? Check with your brides.
Has track started yet?
The seventeenth, November seventeenth.
We have a board meeting Wednesday and then the meeting on Thursday. That's right.
Yeah.
So, yes, yes, or you want to get back to me?
Yeah.
And Kristen.
If it's down that way, it's a lot easier.
We could definitely plan to do something down there because we're down there anyway.
And your brides too? They'll have fun.
All right. So just as far as other dates, just check your calendars and let us know if the corresponding dates for the February fifteenth, that's the tour that we toured the building. That's corresponding dates to last year, four thirty. Work session, the corresponding dates for February twenty-seventh and March first.
Fifteen, that's the third Wednesday. Gosh, that's early too.
Yeah. So and then March eighth would be the board meeting moved up because of the spring break. And then just FYI, the April one would be moved up to the twelfth, so that it's time in time for the to certify the budget on April fifteenth. So March and April are always moved up to the second Wednesday of the month. Um, and then, so the C Stag is a safety training thing that see me and Rob and Zach and Travis D and Bree Crook and Scott Pierce and Bill Daggett are all going to go to. And what it is, it's, um, it's, we had a guy from or a lady, actually, from the FBI come and speak with Jasper County Superintendent's and Police, you know, that monthly meeting I go to. And they talked about that this is the gold standard of training for if you have a kid that you're really concerned about. So it's almost like with Rob and Zach both starting their tier-two teams of kids that they're concerned about, you know, an at-risk kid. This is like almost a tier-three team of kids who we are, you know, really concerned about and maybe takes it to the next level. Um, and it it just walks us through the protocols of, is this a kid that, you know, said something stupid once? And, you know, they've apologized and they didn't mean that they were just speaking out of anger? Or is this a kid that we're really concerned might, you know, harm himself or herself or others? So it's, we get trained from, the professor, I believe, is from like University of Virginia or Virginia Tech or something like that. And so several of the Jasper County schools are going to do this. So the training is on November sixteenth, so it'll be just really, really good learning for us. And then we'll have that kind of almost crisis team that's all trained. So we're going to have people in both buildings. So like, for example, if Zach was gone, if there was an emergency, who's next up? And so that's why we have Mrs. Crook, or if Rob's gone, who is it? So that's why we have Travis and Scott. So anyway, um, we're going to get trained on that on the sixteenth. And then just on a positive note, we had a Zoom call today with the Iowa workforce and an Department of Labor guy, a super nice guy, and he was just talking through some of the intricacies of the teacher leadership grant or the teacher apprenticeship grant, I'm sorry. And Baxter has four apprentices that are paras that are training to become teachers. And so, you know, some of the other districts couldn't even, even though they have the grant available to them, can't even get people to participate in it. So we're really excited about the teachers to be we have on board. There's also a part of the grant for people who are high schoolers who want to train to be paras, who then could also go on to train to be teachers, but we don't have anyone in that program right now. So it's still evolving all the time, but even today was just learned a whole bunch more about some of the competencies that the teachers go through or the the teachers in training are going to go through, and they'll they'll mentor, they'll pair up with almost just like a cooperating teacher. So whatever room they're in, that teacher can help. There's, you know, very specific criteria that, once they've seen them master that, like, they gave an example. They were talking about the the para grant as the example, but they said, you know, they've seen them checking homework for teachers, and they've seen them checking tests, and it was accurate. So once they've seen them doing the things that they need them to do, the teacher signs off on it. And then once they got their like minimum number of required hours, and then if they've met the competencies, then they they can be done. So it's probably about three years, three to four years for the teacher one, and the para one was a little shorter. But it was just really interesting. It's really like just a really good thing for our district that we have that. Well, I don't know if this will open or not for you guys. The link to the fee structure regarding Zanation Public Records, the regulations. Can you guys get it open? Okay, um, some of the other districts around have been just trying to get it spelled out in a little more detail. So this is a potential policy that we could use, just some kind of administrative regulations. We already have the board policy in place, so it's really just me writing up how we want to do it. So just take a look at that, but it's really just, you know, if we get a records request, if it's going to be, we have, you know, thirty days to follow up. If it's, well, I mean, you can read all the details. I don't want to read it aloud to you, but it just spells out like the fee that we would charge for copying. And, you know, if we can do it in just a few minutes, less than ten minutes in total, we we wouldn't charge or we we could waive the fee. But if it's going to take more than ten minutes of someone's time to do this, then there could be a fee involved. Thanks, Mr. Luther. We'll see you tomorrow. Um, anyway, it's just kind of a few steps in the process. So take a look at that and give me some feedback if it's anything that you, you know, have any thoughts one way or the other about. And then otherwise, that's all I have for you unless you guys can think of anything else. I mean, want to say again how pleased we are with our professional development this year. I thought on Monday was really, really good. We're really trying to just focus on building a collaborative culture here and that's open to feedback from the staff. And so one of the things Dr. Anderson did, and I haven't, we have a, do we have a CIA tomorrow? No, Thursday. We'll go through the the results, but one of the things we had them do is just on a sticky note, as far as ways to get input. Like, besides, you know, talking to me in the hall or talking to Rob in the hall, like, what else could we do? Like, so if they had ideas, so I'm really excited to see what they had. So they just wrote sticky notes, like it's anonymous, just put it on a note. If you have something you want us to know, tell us so that we can take a look at it and figure out how to implement that. So I heard, just kind of overheard, I was in a group, so I couldn't walk around. Wendy walked around. But somebody said like, well, could we make some kind of a Google form that was just a feedback form or you're just ideas that they had? So I'm just really curious to see the ideas they had, because we really, really do. If there's people that had good ideas that we, ways to do things better, we are absolutely open to hearing it. So we just want to give them every avenue to to get the message to us. So, um, so really, we just had some really good conversations. So the the surveys we talked about is the high reliability school stuff that we're doing. So the level one survey was all about safe and collaborative culture. And so that's the, you know, can do they feel safe giving us feedback? Do they feel safe, you know, with each other? Do our, do they feel like it's a, you know, supportive community and that sort of thing? And then level two is all about instructional practices. So we, I felt like we spent more time on level one than we kind of spent a little bit of time on level two. But some of the instructional things, and that's what, you know, Rob and Zach have been really doing, a lot of folks are like, you know, today with with Zach's meeting with Solution Tree. They're all about how do we have a collaborative team that's most effective and using the most effective teaching practices to close that gap? So it's really a focused effort on our professional development this year, and I think it's some of the best we've ever had. So, yeah, I'm pretty excited about that. Otherwise, go to our bolts tomorrow or Thursday at District Cross Country. They run, oh, my goodness, it's almost like Missouri. It's Leon, Iowa, way down south. So we've got some potential kids that could make it. Unfortunately, our volleyball team got beat last night, so that was kind of a heartbreaker. And then our our boys play Friday night at Cam. I'll be Anita. Yeah, so fingers crossed on that one, I guess. Trying to let this season keep going, but any questions for me? Or, I mean, you guys always know how to get ahold of me as well.
You heard any updates on the building safety grant?
Um, so we have our meeting on February tenth. And from what, but my understanding is we can't do anything. We can't buy anything. We can buy it, but we won't get paid back for it until after we have our walkthrough on February tenth. So we kind of debated on, do we wait to get this training that, you know, Zach and Rob and I and the staff are going to go to, like, you know, it's pretty important training and it's not that expensive. So we're, we just went ahead and signed up for that one. But as far as, you know, big building projecty type things, we can't do it until after the grants or the walkthroughs happen.
So. And they were kind of back and forth on the local.
And they were definitely. Yeah, so you have to have these. I can't remember where they're from, but like Department of Ed people, but they also want your local police if possible. So definitely Bill, our chief Daggett will be a part of it. And I should say too, Chief Daggett has been just a real gem. I mean, it's been nice to have him. He's been super helpful. You know, he walks around at lunchtime to get to know the kids and, you know, there's been some just situations, some of them school-related, some school not related, but have come into school then because, you know, maybe they happened over the weekend and kids brought baggage with them. So it's just really nice to have a resource right here in town who can help us or we feel like he's a part of the team. So, you know, he'll go to that that C Stag training with us, so we'll all have the same information. And he just finished up like a full week of Dare training. I had to go like Dare School, like eight to five every day for a week or, I mean, it was a long time. And so then he will, he's worked in partnership with Jasper County and because they don't have any Dare trained officers right now or no one available. So anyway, Chief Daggett is going to do the Dare program with our older kids, our fifth grade, fifth grade that do Dag or that do J R. So it's just, it's been a nice, a nice partnership. So. Yeah. Any other questions for me? Well, then you know where to find me if you do.
Board members have anything more? Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting? And the motion, do we have a second? All in favor, I pose same sign. Meeting adjourned.